Good morning. It is January the 16th, and welcome to the City Council meeting. Let the record reflect that all City Council members and City officials are present. We will stand for the invocation, and then the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, as we meet here today to perform our appointed task, we invoke your guidance and blessings on all that we do here. We ask that you guide those here, our elected officials, to reach their decisions in a fair and equitable manner for all. Let them always be aware that they serve the people of this city. Let us, as citizens, assist them as we may to govern us in a manner acceptable to you. And we also ask your guidance and blessings on those of the city staff in all that they do, realizing that they serve the citizens of our city many times in untold and unrecognized ways that are necessary to our well-being. All these things we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. First thing on our agenda today is a proclamation for Dr. Martin Luther King Day, and Council Member Wine is going to read that.
Thank you. It's my honor. Here, can you hear me now? I know my voice doesn't carry very well, right? Okay. It's my honor to offer this proclamation. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, whereas Martin Luther King Jr. led the civil rights movement in the United States from mid-1950s until his tragic death on April 4th, 1968; and whereas Dr. King combined social activism and religious faith, working tirelessly to protest injustice and to focus attention on the plight of the nation's poor; and whereas through his life, he advocated the use of nonviolent resistance in the tradition of Mohaddis Gandhi to overcome oppression and to enhance human dignity; and whereas Dr. King's efforts led to the passage of the 1964 Civil Rights Act and the elimination of legalized racial segregation in the United States; and whereas among his many donors, Dr. King was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in 1964, and the United States Congress voted to observe a national holiday in his honor on the third Monday of January each year. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim January 21st, 2019, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and announces that all are invited to participate in the parade honoring Dr. King, organized by the Macedonia Human Services and Cultural Training Center, which will step off from the Charlotte Harbor Event and Conference Center at 11:00 a.m., Monday, January 21st, 2019, and end at the New Operation Cooper Street Recreation Center. Passed and duly adopted in regular session the 16th day of January 2019, City of Punta Gorda signed Nancy Prackey Mayor and Karen Smith City Clerk, and Reverend Haddock will be accepting the proclamation. Ah, there you go.
I want to thank the City Council and the City of Punta Gorda for not only this year, but the last 26 years we've been celebrating this, and I wanted to thank all of you for your participation, and again invite you to be a part of and not just a spectator of this celebration. Our own Mr. Howard Koenig will be the grand marshal and the recipient of the award this year.
All right.
Come out and support. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, and City Council will be participating in the parade.
Yes.
So, look forward to that, Howard.
Mr. Cummins will be the speaker this year, so please stay for the celebration.
The celebration is at?
Right after the parade.
At New Operation Cooper Street?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
It's gonna be 63 degrees.
Just dress warm. We'll be all right.
All right. Well, congratulations, Howard.
Yeah, it's Friday.
Yeah.
Very Friday.
Awesome. Okay, well, we have, the next thing on the agenda is a presentation, a recap of Florida Regional Council's Association Meeting for the Council Member Wine.
Okay.
That must have been an interesting meeting.
It was cool meeting. It was, can we have the slides? Are they ready?
That's called a deer in the headlights look. I haven't been my agenda. Are they in the? All right.
Oh, okay. I, I, here we go. Okay, I'm gonna move down here. Okay. So, what do I do here? Just?
No, we'll just have to flip them. They didn't have them loaded, so we just have the paper.
So, anyway, I serve on the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Commission, and last week, on Thursday and Friday, we had our statewide Florida Planning Commission, and one of the hot topics was red tide, which is a big tide down here. So, a presentation, a presentation was given by Sean Sullivan of Tampa Bay that does affect our area from an economic standpoint, and I just wanted to briefly recap that portion of the, of the presentation. So, it was a damage assessment of what the economic damage was to the area. It was done with an informal survey where individual businesses could count, call into a website and give their response. It involved 12 counties, including Charlotte County, our county, and the survey questions went as it says, Florida Disaster Biz and Damage Assessment. This particular slide shows by the size of the triangles, the seriousness of the red tide event itself and where they occurred. You can see there were a couple spots on the East Coast, but the vast majority of them really went from Collier County up to north, just north of Tampa Bay. And last week, they were still at the Siesta Key having a little bit of a problem, so it hasn't gone away completely, but it's getting there. It had a number of economic responses, and that's what this slide shows, without going into too much detail. The curious thing about the, the slide, the very, the lower portion of the slide is you can take the various counties and the degree that they were having a problem on a given date, and it virtually tracks when the red tide moved its way up north from the Fort Myers all the way up to the Tampa Bay area. This, the, the peaks and the valleys coincide with the various events. So, just based on this very informal, the, the impact that they were, of, that they were able to show was that just a little Pinellas and Manatee and Hillsborough damage, they had about 2.9 million. This is damage to assets statewide. From this survey, 130 million was identified, but it's a very large under-reported number because only 246 businesses participated in the survey, and we know that a lot more, probably 246 businesses just at Fort Myers were affected. So, it's a significantly bad, under-reported, but the trend is certainly probably very accurate. Again, 12 counties were impacted of these 240 some odd businesses. There was a loss of 632 jobs, a gross product reduction in business of $72 million, and a loss of personal income of $24 million. Saw also some dramatic pictures of the wildlife that was, you don't have to go back there. Okay. Anyway, this really just restates what we said. We can, we can go on from that one. I'm sorry. So, with that said, there's also a promotion I want to give. Our county commissioner, Bill Truex, is sponsoring a Red Tide Summit for us here in Charlotte County at the Charlotte Harbor Center. It will be on between 1:00 and 5:00 p.m. on January 29th. I would encourage all who have an interest in the, the red tide, either from a personal level, from a business level, et cetera, to register and attend. It's a hot topic. We want to be prepared for the years coming. Red tide may or may not occur every year to significant portions, but we do need to take as many steps as possible so that when it does occur, we don't feed it, and that was one of the big problems that we were having yesterday. So, I would encourage you to attend Commissioner Turek's summit that he's holding that's open all to the public, but kind of like the Journey to the Future, you need to register, so we make sure we have enough seats for y'all. Okay? That's really all I wanted to present, and thank you very much for your attention.
Staff will put this up on the website.
Okay, great. Super. Oh, and staff will put it up on the website.
Any questions for Gary? Thank you, Gary. I know when I was on the, representative to the Regional Planning Council, there were discussions about going to Tallahassee for one of those, to a regional meeting, but there never was one, so.
Yeah, we had four go up from the, from the, from the region, and it was a, a chance to interview, interact with the people from all the other 12 regions that are represented. We were all over there. So, it was an interesting two days.
Good. Thank you. Well, we, it's not council, this is not citizen comments. Okay. Now is the time for introduction of board and committee members. So, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to introduce themselves if you're nominated for a board or a committee, please step to the podium and do so now.
Good morning, Mayor Prackey and Council members. My name is Jack Pryor. I'm up for renewal on the Burn Store Advisory Committee. A little background, I have a business here in town. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce. This is my 29th year as a professional environmental scientist. This is my first term, and I'm asking to be reappointed for my second term.
And that's the Burn Store Isles Canal Advisory Committee.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Excuse my appearance. All my winter clothing's up north.
I understand. I don't think, a lot of us have a lot of winter clothing down here.
I see. I'm not the only one, but I just thought I'd.
I thought about it. It's all my, all my winter clothes. I got rid of those when I moved from Colorado, so.
I understand. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to go to Orlando, so I have a long drive ahead of me.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here. All right. Any others? Then we'll move on. We have, the next thing on the agenda is a public hearing, excuse me, a quasi-judicial public hearing.
Yes. Before I read this resolution, by title only, anyone that's going to be providing any evidence or testimony would like to speak to SV-01-18. This is a quasi-judicial public hearing, so please rise to be sworn by the City Clerk at this time.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. When you are ready to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, and indicate that you've been sworn.
This is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, vacating the two undeveloped 10-foot wide alleys lying in Block 11, City of Punta Gorda. According to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 1, page 15 of the public records of Charlotte County, Florida, more particularly described in Exhibit A, and providing an effective date.
Good morning, Lisa Hannan, zoning official, and I have been sworn. The agent and property owners are requesting to vacate the remaining portion of this alley. The alley in this block is not currently maintained by the city and is used by the adjacent property owners as needed. There are some obstructions in the alleyway, such as landscaping and some utilities. However, staff has received no objections from any of the utility companies. Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval of the request, and staff recommends approval of the request.
Are there any questions for Lisa?
Not at this time, but I will have some.
But you will have some?
I will have some after discussion.
Okay. Okay. This is a public hearing. If anyone wishes to?
We'll hear from the applicant first.
Oh, sorry about that. Does the applicant wish to come up and, and speak? Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Kim Devine. We are just requesting to vacate the alley that is, nothing's really gonna change with it. I don't think that part of it's landscaped on the Ivy's property and the other property is, you know, using it, so we're just vacating it.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, then we'll get with the public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify in the public hearing, please step to the podium. And you have three minutes.
Don Savatini, for the record, and I have been sworn. What I'm gonna try to do is just present some information or maybe some thoughts that you can take in before you guys make your decision, and then hopefully I can possibly make a suggestion or give some options. I know on October 11th, an LLC filed for this property for a petition to have this vacated, and then the DRC on November 9th had a meeting and basically stated that there was a gas line in the alley, and then the Planning Commission met on December 18th and approved the vacation request. And then I was just kind of stating some past things that have happened. I'm not looking for the council to take any responsibility, but one of the questions that I had and didn't really understand is if this was a piece of property that was owned by the city, and I don't know all the ordinances, but I don't understand how all of this was developed with landscaping and taken over by the homeowners, if this was city property that was actually supposed to be an alleyway or maybe an easement. And so, my question was, that's water under the bridge, but it seems to be a given that that's okay. And then the other thing I'd like to point out is that this is a piece of property that's an asset that's owned by the city, and so I would think that the city would try to do everything they could to generate revenue with this asset, like possibly selling it, and that might be something they could think about. I also know that this is a piece of property that is close to the park, and if this was an existing alleyway, could possibly have been used for parking over the years, could still be used for parking in the future if the city didn't vacate it. And I guess my question is, is are we just going to give the property to the homeowners, or are they going to have to purchase the property? So, working with the homeowners, if we were going to sell the property, maybe we could do a, write a first refusal for the existing homeowners, but I do see this as an asset that the city could probably generate some revenue for. Thank you.
I can respond if I, if you wish. Well, let's hear, we can hear if there is any other public comment.
Is there any other public comment? Okay. I don't think so. So, do I, do we need to have a motion?
Well, let me, let me respond to that question. I think it's, I think it's a legitimate question, and I think my answer might be helpful to the City Council. With, with rare exception, alleyways, road rights of way, and other items on recorded plats that are dedicated to the public for public use and accepted by the government for the purposes in which they're dedicated are not owned by the city. In actuality, the, the land underneath that designated right-of-way is, is owned by the individual budding property owners. That's why when a vacation occurs, the property is split between the two adjoining, two or more adjoining property owners. And so, there's really no way that the city could, could sell the, the property to a third party other than the property owners themselves if they in fact own it, but we don't own it, so we can't sell them something that, that they already own. So, the question really boils down to whether or not the alleyway is still required or may be required in the future for the uses to which it was originally dedicated. So, that's, that's part of your deliberation process in deciding whether or not to grant the vacation, because once you grant the vacation, it, it, the, it remains private property, but the restriction with respect to the use dedicated to the public is removed, so it can be used for private purposes without the public. As far as landscaping and, and stuff is concerned, again, it's private property. If it's a right-of-way that is being used by the city, the city has an opportunity to regulate the use of the right-of-way for landscaping or what have you, but if it's an unused alleyway, there's really nothing that the city needs to do to prevent it from being improved or obstructed unless the city actually needed to use it for that purpose, in which case the city could direct the owner of the property to restore it to its unimproved position.
And there have been a number of these throughout our city.
Yeah, I mean, but there's, there are some, there are some that for whatever, that, that are in a particular position that the city might indeed have a need for in the future for utilities or other purposes, in which case the city may decline to grant the vacation, and there may be other circumstances where the alley has outgrown its usefulness to the city or no longer beneficial currently or projected in the future, and therefore it can be eliminated. The historic basis of the creation of alleys back in, in the day was to have an area that you would put your garbage and other things behind there, and maybe separation for fire protection purposes. I mean, there's all kinds of reasons why alleys were originally created back in the late 1800s, early 1900s that really are, have no application today. And then again, there's some areas where we've got rights of way that remain very useful today or in the future. So, that's your consideration as to whether or not to grant this request.
If I may add, the remainder of this alley has already been vacated by councils several years ago. I don't have the date, but, and it's not a used alley in this area, so this has already, the white portion behind it has already been vacated. This is just the remainder of that alley that's being requested to be vacated.
Okay. Should we close the public hearing before we have Councilmember comments, or should we?
Well, unless there's any further comments that may have been spurred by my, my presentation, then, otherwise you can close the public hearing.
Okay.
You gotta ask three times.
So, I'll move to?
You don't have to ask three times. Just the kind of customary.
So, are there any other comments in the public, any other testimony? Final call.
Motion to close the public hearing.
There's been a motion to close the public hearing, and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I should say, those opposed? But the motion carried, so, okay.
Okay. David, just for clarification now, so, the, we've done these before, I understand that, but when we vacate an alley, essentially the property already belongs to the property owners that are asking for the vacation of the alleyway?
Correct.
And it's already currently taxable property?
Well, I don't know that the, I, I think that the property appraiser doesn't actually tax it because it's, it's impressed with an easement for public purposes. In the future, however, once it's been vacated, the property appraiser will tax it as private property.
Okay. And primarily, these alleyways are used as easements for utilities or other things?
There's a whole host of, historically, of purposes for which the alleyway was created. Sometimes it may just have been created back in the day for cemetery purposes. I, you know, I don't know. Like I said, historically, before we had a lot of, you know, sanitary sewage and all that kind of stuff, the, the alleyway was where the things that you wouldn't want to have in the front of your yard would be in, in the back between two opposing properties. Alleyways are used for the location of utilities. Alleyways are used for the location of, of drainage ways. Alleyways are used sometimes for the location of other types of things that serve a, a public benefit. In those instances where it's historically hasn't, hasn't been used for that purpose, and there's no foreseeable use for those purposes, although it's totally within your discretion as to whether or not to grant the, the variance, I mean, the vacation, it is not uncommon for vacations to be granted when there's no perceived current or future use.
Okay, and just one, one final question. So, when, when a vacation is granted, then the property owner can essentially extend their property border and fence it off?
Well.
And privatize it, kind of?
They, they won't extend it. It's, it's extended by a matter of, by, by, by a matter of law.
Right.
But yes, they can, they can fence it off.
Okay. That's, that's all I have.
Okay. So, just one more quickly. But, for example, there's a gas line under it, so if for maintenance reasons, it's still accessible to repair and utilities that are in place.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, it would be, would you like to answer?
We received comments from all the utility companies, and TECO Gas commented they had no issues with this vacation, that they were still accessible.
I just wanted to be, just, just to be clear, you know, I'm?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, if the utility has either a, an actual or implied easement for their line, that would still remain.
Yeah. I'm just restating it.
Are there any more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve SV-01-18.
I second it.
There's been a motion in two seconds for SV-01-18. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for the discussion. And thanks for the clarification, too.
You're welcome.
Because I think it's a, often a discussion where residents are asking about the, the actual right-of-way, and who owns the right-of-way, and why, why doesn't it show up as my property on the property appraiser's website, yet, as you have explained before, it is our, it is that, that property owners?
Unless, and it's not, it's not totally uncommon, but unless the developer, whoever had ownership of that particular right-of-way to begin with, actually deeds it to the city, or under some circumstances, there's a statutory dedication, if the, if there's a, a dedicated right-of-way, a street right-of-way that the city improves, and, and under the statute, there may be a way that the city actually acquires ownership, but that's, that's the exception to the rule.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda before we have citizen comments? Okay, well, then we'll have citizen comments on consent agenda items only. That's the resolution of the City Council reaffirming the resolution of the rules of conduct, approval of the minutes, a legal invoice, and a Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program Resolution. Any comments? Please step to the podium. You have three minutes.
Sherri Eleanor, I'm a resident of Punta Gorda, and I'm not sure that this is the correct form to address this, but I do want to bring up something that happened in 2018 prior to the November election, when an elected official apparently inadvertently wore a campaign button, soliciting votes for a political candidate while conducting official city business and seated at the dais.
If I might, if, if I might just, this may not be the appropriate time to bring that up.
Okay.
So, unless you're addressing the, the items that the mayor just identified, there will be?
Okay, and so I was talking about the first item?
The rules of conduct.
The rules of conduct?
Sorry for interrupting. Just wanted to make sure we were correct.
Thank you for clarifying what item you were?
You might, I'm, I'm sorry. You might go ahead and reset the timer because, due to my interruption.
I'm not gonna, I'm not taking, take three minutes, so it's fine. I have no desire to single out anyone for the occurrence because it was brief and it was immediately corrected, but it did give me pause. Was it permissible for our city elected officials to do campaigning while seated at the dais? And brief research found the answer to be yes. While city employees are expressly forbidden to be involved in political campaigning while performing their jobs, city council members, even though paid a salary from taxpayer funds, are allowed to do political campaigning even from this dais and while performing official city business. I'm of the opinion that this is wrong. I do not believe that city elected officials while performing city business should be allowed to show political preferences. I do not care what their preferences are, nor do I care what they do on their own time, but when performing city business and acting in an official capacity, they should exempt themselves from engaging in political activity. As a former federal employee, I was governed by the Hatch Act and not allowed to do political campaigning while on the job, as most city employees or public employees, including the City of Punta Gorda staff members, are not. The same standard should be applied to an elected position because it carries more weight, and I feel you should be held to a higher standard than a general employee. I am uncertain if this, if this is the correct form to address? but when performing city business and acting in an official capacity, they should exempt themselves from engaging in political activity. As a former federal employee, I was governed by the Hatch Act and not allowed to do political campaigning while on the job, as most city employees or public employees, including the city of Punta Gorda staff members, are not. The same standard should be applied to an elected position because it carries more weight, and I feel you should be held to a higher standard than a general employee. I am uncertain if this, if this is the correct form to address this concern, but I would ask that the council to ensure political campaigning does not occur in the future while you are performing official city business. I would ask the council to officially address this activity either in the rules of conduct or some other place of official city regulation or standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? So-
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? No? Motion carries? Okay, moving on now to the regular agenda item. We have several items here. Should we, there's a budget item on the utilities fund for the automated metering infrastructure. We have downtown farmer's market expansion, a committee to develop long-term solutions for pickleball play, a strategic plan, FY 2019 January progress report, action register quarterly report, and a discussion regarding the adoption of a resolution to establish a policy regarding council action on non-agenda items. So if any citizen would like to speak on any of these items, please step to the podium. You have three minutes, and either podium is fine.
Good morning. My name is Lori Lanhardt, and I live in Banyon Point condominiums in building number one, which is on the corner of Henry and Shreve. And I'm speaking to you today about the pickleball committee. I recently read in the newspaper of the discussions occurring regarding the possible relocation of some or all of the pickleball courts now located in Gilchrist Park. As a pickleball player, which I am, and I play indoors at the South County Regional Recreation Center, and I'm also a resident owner in Punta Gorda, I certainly understand both sides of the stakeholders' positions on this issue, and I lean towards sympathizing with the homeowners. I'm reaching out to you as a homeowner and resident of Banyon Point condominiums, building number one, which I indicated is on the corner of Henry and Shreve. As I understand, there's consideration of the court relocation that would be, be behind the new library. It was noted that this was being considered and it's being presented as a non-residential area that would not be noise impacted. Well, I can tell you that there are certainly homeowners, and like myself, condominium owners, that would certainly be affected by the relocation of such courts. There are homes along Henry Street, and there is our condominium on the corner of Henry and Shreve. As it is now, we can hear the dogs barking at the dog park, which will be close to the proposed site of the court, if I understand the site correctly. If we can hear the dogs barking down the road, we can certainly hear the associated pickleball noises. Please don't move the problem from one residential area to another. We may have less valuable homes than those million dollar homes being affected now, but our retirement homes are just as valuable to us in this proposed new area as those being impacted now by Gilchrist Park. I love my location, I value all the city offers. Please don't force me and my fellow homeowners near me to relocate to escape an impending noise assault. These courts belong in non-residential areas unless they are inside courts. I respectfully ask each of you, would you want to listen to those noises in your home all day long? I trust you to think of all the city's constituents in your planning process, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak? Please step to either podium, and you have three minutes.
My name is Shay Wetzler, and the home address is eight eleven West Henry Street, which is directly across from the driveway-
Oops, sorry about that.
Which is directly across from the driveway of the dog park. So I wish to address the pickleball subject, and I would just like to mention, as this other woman did mention, that there is the constant barking of the dogs. So I think the pickleball noise would be a great disadvantage for the homeowners. And because of the dog park, there is a lot of traffic on that West Henry Street, and when the new library is opened, there will be more traffic. And when there, if there would be a pickleball park there, that would cause more disruption, and especially on the corner of Shreve and West Henry, where there is a four-corner stop, it's very busy now, which it seems the city would have to install a signal light. The other subject to be addressed about this West Henry Street is when the city fire department needs to get to a location, it seems like West Henry Street is the street that is most often traveled. And if there are more people and traffic, cars, and so forth with the pickleball, it seemed like that would be a hindrance with the fire trucks that are very often up and down that road of West Henry. So those are things I think that should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to comment? Please, if you wish to comment, would you please stand, come to the podium and get in line so that we can keep moving this forward?
Sean Sabatini, for the record, I just have a question for more of a process check than anything, and I know, David, you're usually pretty good at keeping us in line, but the agenda item is committee to develop long-term solutions for pickleball play in Punta Gorda, and it seems like we're just talking about general pickleball noise and Henry Street move, and I'm confused, is this something that should be discussed now or just the committee?
The item, the item is regarding the committee. I suspect that, given the liberal attitude of, of the state and the council regarding input from the public, I'm not going to crack the whip.
Yeah. You're absolutely correct. It is, the topic is actually just the selection of the committee, but it's, it is associated with it, so it's, okay.
Tim Devine. I want to talk about something else. The expansion of the farmer's market, I was just wondering if you've considered possibly moving it to Lashley Park, where the gazebos there were, were built for that, really, because hopefully it's going to get bigger and bigger and bigger, and it's just going to expand, and there would just be so much room to grow there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I can't go by without talking. My name is Andrea Gately, I live on, no, four one three West Reda. And no, I'm not going to talk about pickleball. I'm all in favor of expanding the downtown farmer's market. I think it is a wonderful item that we have here in Punta Gorda. As a matter of fact, it's one of the things that attracted me to Punta Gorda, along with Gilchrist Park, but that's another subject. So I would, I'd really like to see we consider expanding it. I mean, I think we do have to control the parking situation, of course, the, you know, that garage has still got to be available, but I would love to see it grow all over downtown.
Thank you. Sir, did you wish to?
Thank you. Vic Kraus, about 150 yards from Illuthera and Henry, and I think some of the other folks have pointed out most of our concerns, the traffic on Henry, the cacophony of, of dogs, and here's a good one for you. So I got a Maltese, and so you folks probably have a dog. This animal is an extremely well-behaved dog, but the minute he hears a tennis ball or a ball of any kind, he starts barking like crazy. So what I would offer is, there could be a synergy, if I think you get the idea. So we don't need any more barking dogs, mine included, and I'll just let you think about that one, so.
Thank you. Okay.
Hi, Charlie Councilman. I just want to let you know that I've, I've been to the pickleball park many times, and I've watched them, and sometimes it's very serene and a few players, other times it's been very, very busy. And then one time I went there, and it was that national tournament, I'm sure you're all aware of, and that brings in a lot of people. People from all over the United States actually came to that tournament, as I understand. So I just wanted to put that in, and, you know, it becomes a very, very busy place, and to put it behind the library, it's supposed to be a serene area for the readers, and to put that, even think about putting it close to, into the library area of the property, I think maybe should bore it a little more, closer attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I need to crack the whip?
Yeah. Yes.
All right. The, the topic is the selection of the committee, so I would hope that you would confine yourself to the topic on the agenda.
Any other comments? All right. Seeing none.
Hi, Craig Eric. Since the topic is the selection of the committee, it seems that most of the comments that have been addressed here should be addressed to the committee, who are going to form the long-term solution, but I don't hear any comments about the composition of the committee, when it will meet, who will serve on it, how those people will be chosen.
Thank you. Okay. I think we can move on. We will close the citizen comments now and move on to the budget item.
The, we'll have our finance director present utilities item.
Yes, utilities is here as well. So we have an agenda item to increase staffing in the utilities department by point five FTE. The division, water distribution, had a part-time service worker position, and would like to increase it for an AMI technician to take care of any problems associated with AMI as they come along, as well as do work that was previously done by our contractor for meter reading.
Those of you in the public, AMI is the automated meters that we're putting in the ground, we're about 88% complete, and utilities and billing and collection would like one person to oversee all of the turn-ons, turn-offs, any technical issues. The person that we have in mind knows where all the meters are, has been honchoing the project anyways, so we want somebody to focus entirely on that system.
Other questions? Comments?
I just feel that we've lost an opportunity to really share with our community the advantage of the AMI, in that we have actually been slowly needing fewer meter readers as we have transitioned to this new system. So we used to have, we used to actually employ people to, as meter readers, and then we outsourced that. So to, for us to expand a position, in the long run, this whole system is actually saving our community money, and it's saving, it's saving our, our residents, any, I should say, not just residents, any of our users' dollars, because we are discovering leaks and, as they're occurring, as opposed to waiting until someone's bill gets-
That is correct. Billing and collections has been very proactive, trying to get through the lists and notify people as they see usage for a 24-hour period. They get a report if the usage is for the full 24-hour period. And eventually, once we do go live, customers will be able to go online and see that information for themselves as well.
Yeah, so my point is, while it looks like we may be increasing headcount in the long run over where we used to be, it's quite a difference. Lynn?
Just a couple of quick, sort of related questions. So the people who have had their meters converted to this date, are, are they able to go online and check their usage at this point?
Not yet. We're not live for customer use yet. We still have to be trained, and they still have to hook everything up into our systems.
Okay, and how do you know if your meter has been changed out?
They could check with our billing and collections department if they're not sure, but they may have already seen a technician there converting it, but if they're not home, they may not have realized it.
Lynn, my meter has a cap. Where the old meter was, there's this little gray circle when, that they put in when they converted it. So you can just look at your box and see this circle.
Okay. But if someone had, didn't think to go out and look, you know, they could always call billing and collections and see if their address has been copied already.
Thank you.
If they miss our meter, do we get free water?
No.
We won't miss your meter.
Bill will still go out.
Any other questions?
We need a motion to, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the, the AMI technician position.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the position. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move into new business. The first item is downtown farmer's market expansion.
Good morning, Lisa Hannan, zoning official. Staff received the request for the downtown farmer's market to expand over on a portion of Sullivan Street, between Sullivan Street and the parking garage for, for, not the parking garage, I'm sorry, the parking, parking lot for the former Wootsitski Law Firm. What's in front of you is from our public works department, our maintenance of traffic person, who, this is his recommendation on how the maintenance of traffic for the farmer's market needs to be completed to be in compliance with FDOT regulations. So staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. All vendors must keep clear of the fire hydrant at the corner of Sullivan and Olympia by 10 feet. The market organizer must follow maintenance of traffic plan provided by Public Works, including placement of required FDOT barricades and cones. And the farmer's market shall not utilize Sullivan Street expansion area when said use will interfere with the, an approved special event such as, but not limited to, the annual Sullivan Street craft fairs, the annual downtown block party, or any other future events permitted by the city. The city will provide the market organizer at least 30 days' advance notice of an approved special event involving the use of Sullivan Street.
Okay. Questions? And Jerry, did you have any comments?
Good morning, Jerry Prusseller, manager of the farmer's market. Do you have any questions for me? I'm here to answer them.
I have one. Lynn?
I don't know who wants to answer it, but why, why are we showing that Harold Court is cut down to one lane, one-way traffic?
When I spoke with Dave Myers, who is our traffic manager as far as maintenance of traffic, currently, the farmer's market utilizes these parking places, but there's no barrier between both lanes of traffic and the vendors and the public that utilize these parking spaces. So for public safety, he is utilizing one lane of Harold Court with the cones to make it safer for the public and the vendors that are there. Right now, they're using nothing. They just set up there, and you have two-way traffic going in and out there. If they wanted to change it and come in from Marion Taylor and back out onto Harold Court, that wasn't part of the conversation with Mr. Myers on that. I take his expertise because he's a certified maintenance of traffic person, and we, and he does this for most of the events within the city.
I understand the safety concern, but I do have a real problem with closing down that road in any way, because for, for any kind of emergency responders to get through there would be an absolute nightmare if something happened. And also, there's access to the parking garage, there's access to the Sunloft Garage- There's access to the Sunloft Garage, and also other parking on the south side of the strip center there. That's going to be, it's going to be encroached upon by having one lane closed. I would much rather see it squared off, just like it is now.
Well, they can't block, they've never blocked and never intended to block part of the Sunloft Center parking garage. I mean, maybe that's just the way the graphic is. I can't answer, but we can most certainly make it squared off across Taylor Street there. But...
I think for safety and security reasons, that's, that would be my position on it.
But the parking along Taylor, next to Olympia, in front of the justice, or in front of the courthouse, and the parking along Harold Court by the courthouse right now is utilized by the farmer's market.
Could we ask for input from Chief Davis and Chief Riggs on the safety issue that's just at point?
Certainly, they can come in and comment on it if, if the police...
This is the first time I've seen this, but we've been doing this for three years and have had no problem with traffic.
You're closing down one lane of Harold Court?
Ma'am?
You've been closing down one lane of Harold Court?
No one way. It's been two-way all the time.
No, they, they enter, they park, they, they take up some of the parking spaces.
I understand that part, but this is showing that one lane is closed down and it's one-way traffic.
That's correct. That's a recommendation from Public Works. You can either accept it or not.
Again, I'd like input from our chiefs, and I see that they're in the room right now.
Ray Riggs, Fire Chief. So certainly shutting down one lane is going to affect how we come in and out, but it does happen. It happens, you know, throughout the city on a regular basis. You know, with whether it be an incident or just, you know, what's going on. So we can work around it. I don't know that that's a reason to, to not do this. It's, you know, we can work around it. I know Chief Davis...
Yeah, same thing with the police department. It doesn't really affect our response time very much.
So it's a manageable problem?
Yes.
Issue. Okay. Thank you.
The, the entrance to the Harold Court parking garage and the Sunloft parking garage will always be open. That's never closed. So the question is, do you, do you want to do the one-way or just keep it two-way the way it is now?
I have a question for Jerry. You have, how many vendors that are on a waiting list to participate?
Right now, I have 12.
And you'll be able to accommodate how many in the, in this expanded area?
I'm sorry, I woke up with a head cold, aren't I?
How many vendors will you be able to accommodate in the expanded area?
17.
So then you will actually accommodate all of your waiting list? That you will accommodate all of your waiting list?
Yes, ma'am.
What are you going to do for long-term? Because, so if you have more vendors, because everything I read is the popularity of farmer's markets. The question was raised earlier about, what about using Lashley Park? I remember that conversation when the farmer's market was first started. And it was because you wanted traffic in the downtown area as opposed to over at Lashley.
The only problem with Lashley Park is it's out of sight, out of mind. We have a lot of traffic because of our location. People just stop by. Oh, what's that? They stop in and enjoy. So I wouldn't recommend, I wouldn't like to go to Lashley Park at all. As far as size, there's such a thing as being too big. And I wouldn't want that to happen because then you start duplicating on vendors, and it takes the fun away from, from them being able to make some money. If we do the 17, the next plan, if we want to go farther than that, and I don't think we would, but if we do, we could talk to the Charlotte Community Foundation and talk about using their parking lot, which is right next to Sullivan. We could put a bunch more tents in there. They don't use that on Saturdays for the most part. They've got an event coming in February, but that's, that's the first one they've had in a long time. And they may even enjoy having vendors there because they could have a space and do their thing.
Okay. All right. Lynn?
Jerry, one other question. Since we are going to be doing resurfacing on Sullivan Street, this is going to have to be at least probably 60 days away before it could even be activated. So what are you going to do in the interim?
Well, I, I wasn't sure about the road closure. When I spoke to Mr. Jackson last time he was here presenting something, he told me that the corner of Sullivan and Olympia, where they have the problem, is not going to affect Sullivan Street. So I don't know where we are with that.
We plan to work with the utility company to, what's called Jack and Bore Go Under the Street. So I don't even know if we're going to be, if we're going to need to close West Olympia much at all. I mean, obviously, to resurface, we'll have to do some patching, but most of the utility work is going to go underground.
But we do have to do repaving there, so...
Yeah, we got to do the re-bricking in there.
I mean, that's what I meant, re-bricking.
Yeah.
But just at the corner.
Yeah, but we'll have to coordinate with them.
I mean, if we're going to close Sullivan, then I wouldn't start the vendors until after that was resolved, if and when.
Yeah, and we're going to plan to start that work after the Sullivan Street Arts and Crafts Fair, which will be next week.
This weekend.
Any other questions for Lisa or for Jerry? So what is your...
I motion for approval.
There's been a, a motion for approval. Debbie has seconded. So we have a motion and a second to approve the downtown farmer's market expansion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you.
A no vote, or you were saying no?
No, I was just saying, those opposed, say no. Yeah.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome. Congratulations, Jerry.
Mayor, Mayor Prof, do we want to, the motion to include the conditions?
Yes, motion to include the conditions, yes.
Okay. Just one verification before we do the official letter back to the farmer's market.
Do you include the conditions in your motion?
Yes.
Could we actually do an amendment to the motion then, make that official?
Okay, so...
I amend the motion to include the conditions.
I second the amendment.
Okay. So then we have to vote on the amendment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. The committee to develop long-term solutions for pickleball play in Punta Gorda.
So based on last council meeting, council requested